Christmas, we know it's here. It's all about. And Christmas. Hi. It's great, it's good. Okay, good. Happy holidays to you, to you, to you, to you. Living sometimes in the noise this one, so I hear all the noise from all of them. It's like it's a touch. To enhance, he said, there's things, I'm sure, that does get down with, I don't, I also, so, I don't have the surface. I mean.
The church.
And.
The nature of limbs.
Yes. Sat in the hurry, he works to do the, he was so pure, Jay, I was, are you sure that I'm this rich, how do okay, as well. Yeah, well, well, we should probably about five or six down from their, right, right, he showed right on our night train. That, I was against.
Here this.
That is so. And then you know, such a, you're ready to, 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 to have such, for those to get together, and he's trying to. It's, I suppose, I talk, which, the original, he doesn't, and since I'm on board, you know, this struggle. Whatever, because they should do points, which we own, we just, and they're, they're, we're gonna show that all.
I appreciate Dale your guidance on what the actual guidelines are. And then there's a new agenda item. Approval of a letter of interest for the land trust. Um, I don't know if I have public comment about that or not, since I don't know what that is. Could I suggest you open up? Public comment before you take a vote, once we all get to know what that is?
Land trust has been around for three years.
Oh, I'm familiar with the land trust, but what, we don't know what it, this is. Do you want to expand maybe? On what this item is? Is it about the beach?
Let's wait until we get to that agenda item and then if there's something that you don't understand, because that will be. Our last agenda item.
Okay, is it about Beach Street?
Yes.
So um, I just would like to remind everyone that land is a valuable asset. For all of us as residents of this city. And this city has a lot of financial needs right now. We've got. You know significantly unfunded pension liability, no news, everybody knows that. We've got a marina that has been described as the worst along Lake Michigan, that probably needs renovation. We've got a lighthouse that needs. A million dollars worth of work. Blue is about to spend five million, maybe we could. Bend that number if we didn't have to borrow as much. Uh, streets need to be repaid, some streets have been on the agenda for a couple of years and delayed. Um, and not done, so there are, and in consulting fees, I've heard, you know, any number of consulting fees the city has incurred. So I would encourage if there's any consideration on Beach Street land, that it is a sale and not a gift. That the land on Grove Place, I believe was a sale. Uh, so it's not unusual for the land trust to actually buy land. So keep everyone in mind. Keep the whole city in mind. It's very sensitive to housing, huge crisis across this country, but let's not. You know, hurt the rest of the community for the sake of a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have her help you. Moving on to correspondence.
And several items of correspondence. Um, the Benzey County Administrator Katie Zikes invited the city to participate in the twenty twenty four Master Plan Update, Benzey County. Uh, Perryville Garden Club, thank the city for recruiting employees for their assistance in watering the flower pots in Bean Street. They also provided an update on um, what they have done in the city gardens. As well as giving a listing of the garden shares, um, various individuals have certain specialties for certain gardens. Uh, the Community Economic Development Association of Michigan, thanks to Mr. Mills for um, for housing. Or hosting the root boot camp, the root boot camp.
I got one of those too, but I didn't bring it in for you. Thank you. Me too for. Being a part of that, go ahead.
The Grand Travis Regional Community Foundation, thank Mr. Mills for participating in the panel and sharing the understanding of how local government works. Uh, Munson Healthcare Hospital, thank the city for allowing me to hold a memorial butterfly release in Market, or Mill Springs Park. And a gentleman who is a professor named Scott Wagner, thank Mr. Mills for making clean rushers available at sea.
Josh, we've got some on to recruit.
Yeah.
Yeah, say what they wants to do. Okay. Uh, moving on to the regular council meeting. I think we're looking at seven. I'm not sure over here.
And Mr. Carter, Mr. Charters.
Okay.
I don't believe them.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes of uh, August twenty. Twenty twenty four, as well as special council uh, meeting uh, Memphis. Twenty twenty one.
Second.
Florida.
Yes.
Olson.
Yeah.
Strattan, yes, Charters.
Yes.
Okay, approval of bills.
Okay, don't leave you make a motion for the special council meeting.
I think he included it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, alright, alright. Approval bills, uh, I'll make a motion to approve prepaid vouchers, number five six six eight through. Five, six, 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 eight. H R A, number eighty eight twenty two through eighty eight forty one, the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand fifty five dollars, fifty nine cents, of which. Two hundred ninety six thousand, three hundred thirty nine dollars, forty cents for taxes. Payroll voucher, number four one, three, seven, five through four one, five, one, three, and E F D. Six, six, four through six, seven, eight, and the amount of. One hundred eighty three thousand, three hundred twenty two dollars, sixty three cents, of which a hundred and ten thousand, thirty five dollars, thirty two cents, of which is. Twenty four thousand, seven hundred forty six, eighty cents for employee retirement benefits. Three thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars, eight, six cents for employee deductions. Twenty four thousand, fourteen dollars, seventy six cents for total tax deposits. And one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars, eighty nine cents for merge.
Awesome. Olson?
Yes.
Strattan, yes, Charters?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes. A council member reports.
Hold on, I got one more.
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry. Try to hear, okay, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
To approve vouchers, five, six, 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 nine through five, six, seven, three, four, and the amount of two hundred and sixty seven dollars and ninety. Two hundred and sixty seven, ninety six dollars, twenty three cents.
Seven.
Strattan, yes, Charters?
Yes.
Florida?
Yes.
Olson?
Yep.
Alright, now. We could do committee reports. Ed, of course, is excused for tonight, but I did. Attend the. Downtown developments. And uh. We only had one absence, that was first time we had almost a full board in there, um. The marketing web and website. The winter ad is going to be with Shoreline. Is complete. Uh. And then they want to review uh, and continue sponsorship with I P R. Uh. And that will be like. Then let's see. Brick had contacted T E C, C C A to have thirty minute commercial airtime. At sites where the airport has directed flights. From. For a cost of about a thousand dollars. So we're looking at that at this time. Um. And it would be online, I think we did vote to go ahead and do that, but we were, yes, yes, we did. And it would be online for the spring of twenty twenty five. Um. See. We got a lot of events coming up, the Fall Festival is October eleventh through the twelfth. Outdoor movie and dinner. This is going to be a pure week from September third to October fifth. Films Festival, October seventeenth through the twentieth, and then Rotary is already, and there are. Anniversary, hundred year anniversary.
For Frank.
For Frankford. Frankford Club. Which was pretty interesting, um, what they showed us, uh, the history. In the last hundred years for Rotary. Um. And the corridor improvements, uh, the water system for the dog park I see is in. From. What I saw the workers for being on this, so. Um. And tree brick papers are complete. Uh. Business accelerator text force. Uh. Josh had had a conversation with Mr. Smith, uh. To continue to move forward, uh. And he has a presentation ready for us. Within the next three to four weeks for city council. Um. Finance report, Josh reported what we have in. And what has been spoken for, Josh gave his report of what is coming up. Under old business, uh. Currently, the fusion is the only spot. Not open, so that is pretty good. Uh. There was quite a discussion about broadband, uh. And Mr. Campbell and Carter Light said that he has got broadband through Spectrum down there, so. Uh, rooftop news is still in discussion. And uh. We gave an Ironman update, which they were fully booked. And within the October meeting, we're going to focus on the strategic planning again, that was pretty much it. And, well, let's see, housing commission. Uh, we did meet and uh. We pretty much, Jay, you may have to help me on that, because I sat on it, but I don't have any notes in front of me. If you don't mind.
Well, they lost the conversation. In the government, two things. Looking at phase two location opportunity for on the way apartments.
Yes.
And then the uh, Frankford area, the land trust are interested. Clear next project and according. With the city of Frankford, possibility of a beach street property. That goes with them.
Yeah, those are the. And we do have a full board now. And so. Okay, Dale, your sense?
Okay, um, the personnel committee did not meet, however, we have a meeting scheduled. Two thirty. With the Michigan Fraternal Worker Police Labor Council, Mr. Paul Postle. And that's from two thirty, so we're going to begin those negotiations for police department. That's been, we've been since they, I mean, they changed uh. Union representation that was caused for the dead. We also have a uh, police chief opposition posted. And that uh, posting closes on October fourth. Uh, I think currently we have response uh, so far, and we'll see uh, what we get. By that post, so that's as well. Uh, finance committee met on uh, August twenty eighth. For a year end review for last fiscal year, now let the mayor kind of take that on, but we did meet. Water, sewer did not meet, planning uh, did not meet, that meeting was canceled by the authority, did not meet. Uh, with respect to Blue, uh, if you have our next meeting, uh, this Thursday at eight thirty A M at the plant. Uh, we had a call on uh. Uh, what was that date? On nine, ten? On uh, September tenth with Baker Tilly, Miller Canfield, Honey Bay. Uh, with respect to the preliminary official statement for Blue, it was thirty five pages long, and it was just. Dotting the i's, crossing the t's, some information. I was, that's my first process, uh, looking at bond uh, document. And I was released and how much information was in there with respect to, to both the city and the village. Uh, so we got through that document, uh. They uh, uh, they, they issued a final draft that we were reviewing. Uh, going out, uh, pricing for uh, the expected pricing back. We've got science documents, uh, it's going for pricing. Uh, in the next few days, we'll have pricing, initial pricing on the twenty sixth this month. And we have clarification calls on, on the twenty sixth, uh, November seventh. And uh, if I wrote my information down correctly, that's going to. That whole process is going to close on October twenty third, that's what was your point, right? Are you aware of any further updates out of that?
No.
Okay. So that's uh. You've died, so. Need to execute here, next uh, few days as far as the uh, the Blue Authority is, so. That's what I had for activity for last week.
Uh, finance mission, did you check that?
Uh, the planning commission did not meet.
Oh, that's right, that's right, Marina's garbage.
Yeah, did not meet.
Okay. Okay, finance, yes, we did, uh. Meet and we pretty much just discussed uh, year end numbers. A little early to work, which we do need to set. Uh, maybe for next month or. Finance, but uh, our year end looks very, very, very tight. There's not much money left over this year, like it was in previous years, so. Okay. So anyway, um. And the auditors are coming the first week of October.
Last two or first, fourth.
Pardon me?
October first.
Yeah, through the fourth, and so we'll get a better picture, but from. What all of the amendments that were done, if. We have very, very, very little. Revenue left over, but we stayed with the budget, so. All budgets were balanced, so that was pretty much what finance was. Um, grant, we did not meet, tree board, we did meet, uh, they have. Approximately forty more trees that we want to plant, uh, everything is looking good. Uh, they've got some fertilizing, they've got some, uh, a lot of work. To be done, so their fall schedule is really, really busy, and uh. They also want to uh, put out a plea if anybody wants trees. You know? Feel that you need some trees in front of your place, let us know. Because we're pretty much hamishing altogether, I think we will have planted. Eighty trees. By the end of this year, so. And we, we're getting quite a few compliments. Tell. That, so that's pretty much it for me. Brady?
Uh, let's see, public safety, we have left after a while. Uh, record, we attempted to meet last Monday. Have a forum, so that meeting was canceled. Uh, real quick on the record, we're still working on. Bathroom stuff for both Lake Michigan and Seventh Street, and I know Josh, I just saw an email from you that. Been in contact with. Tyler, Tyler, whatever, Steve Meyer, Steve Meyer, there we go. Tyler Meyer.
Now, you see the effort, anything, no?
So this is a prefabricated company that brings pricing.
This is different than the one that you got before?
Uh, this is a revised proposal that's for definitive. Right, so.
Okay.
Uh, I'll, I'll forward that on to everybody to review. And uh, in addition to that, I had conversations with the little bit contractor. We had a project that out. And. I'm talking to him a little bit, uh, you know, so we can do a comparison to prefabricated versus a signed, that bill. Right, you know, just. Just so many like twelve million square foot. What is, that's a pre-fabricated, so.
Yeah, that. Pre-fabricated. Really blew my mind, how much that is, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're still in discussion, some of that stuff, starts the record, but it was, um. Airport authority, uh, was here. Let you guys know what you need to know about what's going on at airport currently, so. That's all I know.
No public safety thing?
I don't know, it was, public safety was not.
Okay. Tennessee. Oh, I did attend the fire advisory board. For research, whoever else was supposed to go, and we did have a quarterly. Fire advisory boards, um, meeting, pretty much got them up today, even tried to answer any questions. Uh, that they may have, uh, a little bit of confusion because they were given the city's budget. Wanted to know, is the city putting anything in, but, so now what we're going to do is have two separate budgets, one for the fire advisory board. Then our city, so that they can see where they are, as well as. How much we did. So there was some confusion there, um. Got good feedback from, didn't, didn't you think Crystal Lake was very pleased, uh, wanted to know about. You know, going forward, it's going to cost more, so I'm so quickly, personally, uh, had a look. They did put valid language in in time for renewals. Of uh, their. Knowledge, so. They're just dealing with it out of their general project this time, so. Or going forward, so. Uh. And another meeting is set up for December. A quarterly meeting.
Yeah.
Wasn't it December, we said, or something like that? So that was pretty much it. Uh, commissioners report, Karen.
It's. Good evening, everyone. Um, the county is, uh, you have my report, I submitted it ahead of time, and I believe I sent updates for you, so when you. Put it on there, because I go. Afterwards, so hopefully that'll be on there, the county's working very hard and has taken seriously on. Communicating and transparency and educating. So one of the things, several of the things I have dropped off are the making sense, which you can. Google and get on the website. And the other thing you were talking, Joanne, about you and the city working on the strategic plan. We also have done that, and if you go to the website, you can get that information, Benzey County Strategic Plan. And it will get that to you, so we are working on the master plan. Um. The B O C recently on ten September approved a quarter million to the Maples for capital expenditures. And that. That was in accordance with the document of understanding dated October of twenty one. At that next, uh, later in the afternoon, we had our study session. And the B O C, I have been tasked with writing a re, a proposal. For renewables and recyclables to be addressed in the master plan. I am working with uh, U of M and Michigan Green Community and quite a few things. It's just to have that in the plan. That has been recommended by MAC. The Michigan Association of Counties, when I've, I've mentioned it. Many times with the Board of Commissioners, again, when I mentioned it, there was crickets in the room, so I've been tasked. With bringing a proposal just to make sure we have that in the master plan. Um. Just a reminder for the benefit of the public. That the Benzey County Master Plan is going to be on twelve November. I know you've heard it a few times, but please mark your calendars. Getting your input ahead of time is greatly appreciated, and you can go to our website to do that, any comments you might have. I attended the MAC Environmental Regulatory. Committee and. City and Josh, you might be particularly interested in this. Uh, the coordinator, we had a presentation from Michigan Green Community. They are providing benchmarking programs to adapt and mitigate water protection. But on their site, they not only have expert available to you, expert advice and opinions. But also funding resources, and I know you're the guy on that, so I would encourage you, I believe I have the website available for you. The next thing you don't. For a different part of the company. And on the twenty fourth through the twenty sixth of September, I will be attending, um. The statewide conference for commissioners, so. I will not be around during that time, and I hope, and I plan to attend Blue up at eight thirty in the morning, I hear you guys have good coffee. So. At Blue, I don't know. Alright. But I do plan to attend that, and unless you, I mean, you have the whole report, unless you have other questions.
Karen?
Yes.
Anything, my cut-off time for the book is Wednesday, and you submitted anything after, it's not.
I, I know, but I always do it right when I'm updating things, just so you have it, so that's occurred. Oh, and no updating, okay. Well, I'm glad I did it verbally then.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Okay. I don't have any questions, did anybody else?
Uh, the green community, they had a lot of great, you know, information there, so. Money available for us with this administration. Thank you.
Thank you. The current reports, well. First.
Yeah, I guess I'll remind everyone that September twenty sixth, at nine AM, we'll be having our public accuracy test. Testing, this is going to be the voting machine on the day of election, as well as the day of voting, so. It's going to be, it'll be following, and obviously our election commission, where we, you know, we point to which we work the elections. That immediately following will be doing this, last time we did it, it took us over two hours, um, because with early voting. We are with Gilmore Council, and they have three different ballot styles. So we have to go through every single one and test every single. Ball style, so I anticipate that it will be into these, you know, new one o'clock, so, um, but if you'd like to come join us and, and. Take part, please come, take part and watch and see how it runs. Um, election training, there is something that's open through October third, it's an online training, if anyone's interested in becoming an election inspector. Um, it's easy, you go online, you do the testing, you fill out an affidavit that you infected that, we submit it into Benzey County, and then. Um. Then you receive your certificate, uh, there's pronouns and different things to follow along, uh, then the Benzey County Clerk, Tammy Bauer, does a great job in putting together that. Training information. Um, just one last note, we had one individual in the city of Frankford. That um, challenged voters' registrations for the city. For various reasons, we sent out seven. Certified mailings, fifteen, seven dollars total. Uh, for people, and these people are challenged, and they will not be able to vote until they come in and improve their residency and sign an affidavit. There, they get, you receive this information through the N C O A, which is a national change of address, which is from the post op. And one individual who is housed at one of our facilities in Benzey County, or in, in Frankford. Her daughter has power treaty, and all of her bills go to um, Hawaii. She's not been challenged, she's not allowed to vote until I personally went up to the facility and had signed an affidavit that she does live there, and she. Is registered to vote, so. I think the U S Postal Service, there's been lots of issues with average changes, and I'm not sure if this is just the beginning, but it was, um. Unfortunate because it really upset her. So, um, that was, that was one. That, that's something that we encountered that we've never tried, so.
Back in the day. I can remember when I had to take ballots up to some of the facilities for. So are they saying that?
They're saying because this individual, according to the post op, it's her mailbox somewhere else, she no longer lives there, so made her mark her challenge, and she had signed an affidavit, saying that she still lives there.
Okay.
So she could, so she was able to, but she chooses. But it's at the, the older population, I mean, it's upsetting, we had two of them, I had to do, you know, it can be upsetting for that, so.
And I noticed, uh, in your report, you've got about the tower update of the stand, so that I have. I think we're. Pretty close to having uh, the agreement with the county, so. Uh. That will probably be on next month's agenda. For our approval, and I think they're going to move forward and have the county. Uh, prepare us as to. Sorry to interrupt you, Chris.
Oh, no worries.
Anything else?
Do we have anything else?
Okay, well, I'm glad to see if Sam wants to say anything.
Yes.
So does she have to get re-certified?
She is actually why I looked it up, she's actually certified this year, she thought she was done in um twenty twenty-three. Zach should have done her or December of twenty twenty-four.
So, but at the end of twenty-four, will she have to get re-certified?
She's planning on.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Thank her for that, we still have another's um seat to fill. Thank you, um Josh.
In regards to the lighthouse, I do have a Zoom meeting scheduled with the Seaberry Foundation on September nineteen. Uh they actually reached out to me, this is encouraging. Um they have been a very good friend to our community for many, many years. So I'm excited to have an opportunity to talk about, you know, some of the things that we've laid out for the. Preservation of the Frankfort Lighthouse. I'm also in communication with engineers, I'm trying to. Have them establish an update with for the rep with the redesign of the new uh normal breakwater. I've not gotten any feedback from them on it, but they did. Uh award a contract with Baird, it's a it's an engineering firm that specializes in reconstruction.
Isn't that the same company that?
The the Bluffs.
The Bluff.
Yeah, and they're they're based out of Waukegan. Uh well, they have offices all over the country, but the nearest ones in Waukegan. Um again, they they specialize in reconstruction, so the core of engineers does does a lot of work with them, so. Hoping to to get an update from them here real soon, and we're at that. Um it has some conversations on what would entail if we're successful raising our dollars. President of the Lighthouse and how that plays in, with the logistics of a new breakwater. They actually work around it, so a portion of that breakwater will be what it was in nineteen thirty-two, just this is, it is.
It is.
Oh, it is, it's very funny, it's structures. So when they take take it off, the sections put on bars, that would make the cost of restoring the lights, when they could be last, but with such luck. Uh we'll be moving forward with the remainder of the sidewalk work, we've got off the screen. Uh so that'll be ongoing into later parts of September and into October. Uh we're starting to work on the expansion of our housing district, uh we've talked about this. Um for several months about expanding the tangible housing facilities district to include a couple of the properties. Uh that people own that are going to be renting out to housing needs, uh so that's one thing we're working on. I will bring that forth uh before that gets released. And our D W crew, it's it's busy working transitioning, you know. From that part of the summer season into the fall season, so we're gonna start working on some of our park areas to be prepared as we. As we uh get ready to lead pickup on some of the things that we do in the fall, leading up into the winter season. Uh we had a pre-bid meeting from. Pretty structured meeting today with our T M F grant project. Um this is all associated with this project, we're being covered by our grant, we have an eagle. Uh we're gonna be doing some hydroexcavating uh various locations throughout the city to determine what type of equipment you have in. On your property, some of you probably already got your water surface replaced or determined what it is. Uh we were successful getting a grant to uh verify a hundred eighty services within the city that. That we're not quite sure, this will allow us to be in a position. To submit to Eagle the exact amount of water sources that we have. That either are galvanized by or that previously connected to lead, doesn't mean it isn't now. But if it was in the past, and it's still galvanized, it qualifies to be replaced. Um we also have a few situations, um this was something that we were concerned about. You know, so all the projects that the city has done since uh the early seventies till now, um on the city side, they're all updated in copper, uh brass. Uh corporation stops at the main copper uh to a curb box. Um up until the situation in Flint. The the homeowner side has always been a homeowner's responsibility, so all these projects that we've done through the years on the city side have all been updated. Um everything is in compliance. So now we're we're mainly dealing with majority of those that are on homeowner's side. You know, from the curb box into the house, we do have a few situations where the homeowner replace up to the house, but not into the house.
Oh.
You know, because when we did our curb replacement project a few years ago, we knew this was coming down, so we did an inventory. That's what gave us kind of our preliminary uh information associated with type of material goes in the house. Uh so we have verified there are a few situations um where where this was just completed in place. You know, so those are areas that we're trying to do a little bit more, we're doing other things to see what's going on there. Um I'm certainly not in support of this, this should be still a homeowner's responsibility, but it's it's a change in the law. Um so we've been able to take advantage of some of the initial replacements, some of the artwork money that we had set aside. Um another good thing about this grant that we're doing sets us up for replacement grant dollars. You know, so we'll be in a good situation to to have a detailed list of what properties that we need to. To address, uh we still have twenty years to replace that at a five percent uh rates every year. Um but this will also allow us to be in compliance with the recording firms that is due in October to Eagle. And then put us in a better position to secure some future funding.
Any idea how many we've got left?
Well.
Because I know you could.
I think we have like a hundred sixty, but uh. You know, we'll we'll get a more detailed number of exact, you know, what size on the city side, what size not, we have a pretty good idea. Spot allows to verify that. And then our engineer, Chicago nine, constantly working on some of the other kind of group jobs that we got laid out. Um inflation has really uh created a lot of obstacles for us from a funding standpoint, but. We were able to secure a category D grant with M dot. Just kind of the mindset to kind of replace some of the completionary pieces that we experienced. Um on the new business, we we have some really good pricing. For uh the paving of Parkview Lane, James Street, Beach Street, we're not doing any utility work on those areas, so it's just straight pavement upgrade. Um we're gonna be working a little bit more diligently on Michigan Avenue in Winnebago. Um in two thousand eighteen, we televised all the sanitary sewer within the community and the storm sewer, that's part of our solid that we received. And a portion of Michigan Avenue was was designated as a certain area, um that was the area between Lelandon. And Haverhill. I just didn't feel good about that data, re-televised that, and I reported about that last month. And uh some of that new updated televised data gives us uh some more concerns on some of those other areas of Michigan Avenue. So I wanna I wanna sell that project out a little bit because we're gonna dig that road up. We need to make certain that we repair that sanitary sewer and storm sewer that's there. The two thousand eighteen data gave us a little bit different picture than we have now.
How old?
Well, so the water main was placed nineteen eighty-eight, uh this is where um was not, so. So it's uh it's it's probably about forty years old, uh. It's it's, that's not super old for sanitary sewer, but when you got some issues, we want to make sure uh we take care of that.
Well, and we will have that dug up anyway for the bad.
So, yeah, what's the material that like just gets concrete? So there's a, there's a low spot. Over your house, um front of Carol Statchel place. That's right underneath uh or underneath that is a sewer main. So we feel that 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 part of that settlement right there is because that joint separated, so that's one bad area, that makes a lot of sense with what we're. I reveal with some of that settlement, and you know, so. It it would allow us to have a better project if we if we do this in the spring, and plus the coral free bond. Will will grow, so our dollars will be a little bit more available. Um but financially, we're in a position to to move forward with this project, it's just gonna delay us a little bit because we're gonna be looking at replacing that sewer.
Which I'll have comment about that when we come to what's on the agenda.
Correct, so any other questions, I think we have a lot going on, um.
I got a, I got a trouble with yours, Josh.
Yeah.
Um I see the the charging station uh installed, what's the uh? What's the timeframe to opposition use?
We are waiting for consumers, I need to set the meters.
Okay.
Once that's done, we're good to go.
Okay, and then my second question is, when I saw an email from you earlier in the month. I know that we uh purchased two of those speeds.
Yes.
Uh with the numbers and I know that we issued a uh. Even on, you know, both locations and all that.
Thanks to go.
What's the uh, what's the uh plan or the timeframe?
Michigan Avenue wants us installed, um we're gonna program it tomorrow. So sell that new one, um air and ice verified location, and we're putting in a slot where you won't see it from your living room, we hope. So I'm curious, I know you don't, but but it's gonna.
It's like to see.
So we're trying to figure out the best location where it would go, uh that should go out tomorrow. And I'll follow, there's some reporting things that we have to do to sync it and calibrate it, and that. You know, put us in a situation where we're in a class of death.
Good.
So. And then we, everything should be up around this.
Good, good.
Amen.
Christian's been amazing, but with that, we've had to deal with a lot of action trails.
Yeah.
So uh in one instance, we had to deal with like the removal of five point three three tons of official trails.
Plus, the Bensy Frenzy was the largest they've ever had, especially the women, you know, they had. Eighty, I think, entries, but then normally it's like ten or fifteen.
That they get sufficient tournament in the entire state.
Yeah. But with that came the problem.
I I also did look at, uh I worked, did a Zoom uh. Meeting with Ironwork, and it's a company that buys software to track short-term rounds. Um they track the R B Os and Airbnb's, and they can pinpoint it to your tax ID. So it's not just a simple situation, it can pinpoint all the properties in the city of Frankford. Um it's five thousand dollars a year that would be paid for from the fees that are generated from the short-term licenses. Um there would be a reduced cost if if the village of Alberta did like township, those are some neighboring coming communities. That that also do license requirements for short-term rounds. Um I can't speak for them, I don't think Alberta's gonna be part of it, but you know.
But do we need to approve that to go forward or?
Um no, I was doing a little research to see if there's anything out there that might be a better product, because. Yeah, and and all the work's done by him, that we can monitor. Um but it's going to be R B O and Airbnb yet.
Which we did find out that we can. Do a code enforcer just for short-term rounds and take that as the keys also. So we're looking into that, just that that's. We need to find somebody that could do that too, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Josh?
No, it's uh we're busy, a lot going on, um Ironman went well. Getting ready for the next uh uh. To leave, so. Got a ball test coming up.
Any other questions for Josh?
Um the question that that Miss Burks had, I'm not in a position right now to be able to answer that, but. Um there's a certain background requirement, so my apologies, I'm not in a position right now to provide that information. Uh we'll definitely make sure you have that. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Chief of Police is not here.
Yeah, I got a question on that.
Yeah.
So is was he off today?
Yeah, he's on.
So I guess I'm kind of just curious as to where he's been, because at the last uh. City council meeting, he wasn't there, he wasn't at the finance committee. Um he wasn't at the special council meeting, uh he wasn't in Ironman, and he's not here today. And I know that's not your job to to do that, I guess, all I'm asking is, on those dates, was anybody aware that he may have been on vacation? On vacation, or was he at a at a function or something that he couldn't attend?
The not, the procedure is is to, for any of her council meetings, any. Meetings that they're required to be at, they need to be excused.
I don't.
By myself.
I don't like states in the charter that the department has under their name.
Yeah, it it does. Or I think as soon as someone or I saw.
It says in the charter that we compel a department advised by any two members of council. To attend a meeting. Uh they, I think it does say in the charter that they are expected to be at regular council meetings, not special meetings. Unless asked by the mayor or compelled by two council members. Um. So. So I guess that's a little, you know. I think I read that in charter when I was digging around.
Right, and I also, I guess, want to check his contract. Because I I guess my expectation, at least. At least for the majority of the meetings, certainly the regular council meetings, so he'd be in attendance unless unless he was on a a call or on a. On vacation or in a special conference or or some related function.
Sure, so, yeah, my opinion, you know. There are times that special meetings, special council meetings, there'd be one agenda I I don't expect that. I'll agree here, but you know, there's no reason for either chief to, if they have something going on, to attend something that. Doesn't pertain to their area of expertise, but maybe I, you know.
Mike has always responded that, does he need to be there and I'll. Email and that and say no, you know, so. He's always been courteous to do that. Anyway, moving on, Mayor Chase's report. Mike. Um each of you have uh kind of a point, we're reporting from you, does anybody have any questions on that?
I I I've got a couple of comments, I guess, I like uh I liked the activity last month with the short-term rounds. And continuing with that process, oh. The other question I had for you is the, you know, you uh that was in here that uh. You know, we went ahead with the purchase of that fire truck, uh triple loss. Coming, that's that was a really goodbye and so on and so forth, but um. You said it's ready for pickup and that, so kind of, kind of at a high level, what's your timeframe on pickup?
Time here, yesterday.
Is it, okay, I'm sure. So what what's the timeframe maybe on operation readiness?
It should be probably within the next month or so, we'll start outfitting, originally planning out of work.
Okay.
Put holes, add some spirit equipment on.
Okay, good.
And that's what we parked that.
Very good. I think they're getting excited about that way. That was fun, it was fun vehicle drive, I drove it all the way up there, about hour and fifteen minutes, and they drove like a charm. Good. Really good truck.
Good.
Good, yeah.
I must say, I was a little scared to hurt you, and then one fifteen, I was coming out of the hill, off right there, and I was like, it's not.
Yes, yes. Yes, um yes, there's. The most all of us, yeah, uh but it's offered statewide as well, so. It's a while. Yeah. Any other questions for my? Moving on to new business, uh that's we hope not all for instance, Eclipse Communications Security, so now. I've read through that stuff, and I'm very confused, so.
That's a task, Chris.
So Chris, if you would just explain how this, you know. Layman's, layman's terms of how this will work and what it will protect and so on and so.
You mentioned, sorry to do so, shall I sell them?
Would you please?
Hello, Christopher, Eclipse Communications, uh to recap, we provide managed IT services, phone service and various. Data services to the city of Frankford. And I'm sure you can all recall, five or six months ago or so, there's been, there's been security events nearby. On Traverse City and one in Bensy County, and around that time, I had a conversation with someone. Regarding what the city of Frankford stands is right now, but. But and then folks, I want more can one do is uh. Uh first. You don't want any of these issues with all your own organization, so. I put together the kitchen sink, so to speak, of documents and sent it to everyone, you know, just to peruse and look through. Expecting at some point that perhaps I could be here today and advise and answer questions. So uh. It should not be construed that City of Frankfurt does not have any appropriate level of security. Uh it should be looked at as what more can be done, it's a security landscape, it's changed a lot in the last. Two years, uh often as new acronyms and terminology being thrown around. With cybersecurity and security, in one of the same, but cybersecurity can spin itself up until it seems to be a different industry. Uh and so. If I could recommend that looking at all the different features and capabilities that are in in this material here would represent. Uh an expansion of one's security posture or security stance. It's not just as simple as running antivirus anymore and making sure it's up to date, it's more. It's more complex than that now because of. The the threat level and the nature of where threats come from, internet, from ourselves as users, these systems. That uh this modular add-on that wasn't the City of Frankfurt would. Greatly increase the strength of your security, but also fill in some missing crannies where one can always make some improvement. Uh being that we're the managed IT provider here currently, the systems that exist, these are logical expansions, they're modules for one. That could be added into the system. Relatively easily and. Uh I guess in more of a certified sense, if one were to go out, like they get in cybersecurity insurance, there'd be a lot of checkmarks that would be checked. Um uh and such certifications to. Are what's your level of preparedness? Data security. Uh from outside threats, but also from inside threats and the greatest threat factor in the world, which is each one of us as we use our systems. So aside from more of a principle explanation, uh I could really get on the rest of all the features and capabilities. But perhaps I could be precise if I could answer a question or two to the relevance of. This software at this point in time and so. I don't know, some type of. Direct concern, so man.
It just, it just, as you said, we already have some, this. Hands is it or covers the bases. It checks our boxes.
Checks our boxes, yes, uh. Trying to not go off on. If there's one more question that could help me stay on that here, I could.
Should any problem with like that just like drugs.
Well, that's kind of a different, so you're, well, I guess on the topic of the server. It should have been updated when times passed, though.
But we did update.
In stance, not the actual chassis and the licensing that's on, which will be. Uh end of life by Microsoft in fairly short order, so when that happens, patches and security updates are not developed anymore for the system. And so it's kind of a hole that opens up over time and just increases. Can make you guys more of a barn, you know, you want to be a small target in the security industry, you don't want to be an easy mark for our virus or something, so. Uh that really should have been updated probably three or four years ago, though I'll digress from why we were here at that time and. I don't know the reasons for it, but. Uh the city core. That'd be a separate one-off project, this per device per month. Fee for additional software to install and stop where it's already here to increase the base presence and effect. Uh. The functions of the software resources. That's just a one-off project, it's. Oh, I guess. It tends to have two chassis in there, the one that we put in years ago, and that's what I'm talking about, it's the other one, the original one. Where it's fallen a bit behind in terms of specifications and. Space is just one of those things, it's easy to mitigate.
Um well, it sounds like we addressed it. So. Alright, uh. Thank you.
Thanks for saying, so um. Slap it over my head, but. Confident you.
Not having any issues, sweetheart, if. Or.
Nothing, no issues, right? No issues, so.
But. It's been here and available. For our sale, there is any complications, so I appreciate that.
And he has a program for the phone, if we can, we click it up, we hit the button, so the man.
A little history, I suppose, gentlemen, yes. Uh. Oh, there's other considerations, I could write up maybe a a document that just kind of uh bullet points.
Of what's secure. Give me.
Well, all the material that I presented is is quite the read, maybe it might make my eyes water a little bit even though I wrote most of it. Uh but there's other considerations for liability and can it future-proof in one of itself, it's. It's not really a matter of if, there there's always going to be a vulnerable, or something happens somewhere, but at some point. When it happens, it's good to be seen as. Historically, they've taken measures to improve your security stance, especially if insurance is involved, or if there's exfiltration of. Data, which you don't want data getting out, so it's kind of the primary thing that we're trying to. Is the perfect area.
Oh.
One more last remark, not present in the material or in the estimate is what cost difference would be. Uh. Used to be famous, not really here, but Kevin Midnight. Hacker, well, this is nineteen ninety's, he was uh famous for hacking. Uh despite his change towards security contractor, now he said something back then, it's still uh still very much applied now, it's uh. The fundamental flaw in any. Any system or the people that use it. There is a just a quick example, I won't name, won't name who or or what organization, but. An executive director is a a long time relationship with their accountant, the same documents passed for back and forth weekly. It's always the same Excel sheets, so they have an implicit trust relationship, no thought, so that was from out there, it can open success file. She did not know. That there was a a virus that was riding along, well, the accountant didn't know that either. Uh and so the missing piece that we talked about later, I spent a little brief over on would be. A program to proactively uh educate and help people who use the system. Be a bit more defensive on the emails that they open, be just treat things with a bit more suspicion. Uh really, because as it is, then it is now. Biggest security factor of the people that use the system, so there's very simple ways to do that. Uh in a non inflammatory way, really, it's better to educate, not so much as track down the one person who's. Attention to communications going out of your network here.
Question, is this gonna help because my email, city email, has been hacked several times, and of course I. Warned all councils that if they get an email from me that looks suspicious, just delete it and block off. Is this gonna help that?
It's one of my questions, sort of, yeah, there's been bogus emails that, but we all have. Compass council members, bail accounts. That we've kind of assigned to ourselves to inform specifically for. Should. Your company be doing something to protect. This board's individual emails as well? Or is our sharing business between us and?
I think. Uh. Going forward with educating oneself and security rights important and just learning a bit fair and fair is one of the singular best things I think, you know. Do, besides purchasing pieces of software or something that will do it for you. It's all valuable and uh. But aside from case by case basis, it won't hurt anything. To utilize your systems or this methodology for protecting oneself and being a bit more. Suspicious or defensive with communications that are incoming and outgoing, there's a number of products and. This hardware and software that can be used to put up a fence for that stuff as well too. Uh it's a shared problem we all had and that we all use the same system straight communications.
Okay. Pardon, thank you. Thank you, Chris.
So, thank you, yes, but maybe excuse, I have a. Thank you, I appreciate.
Okay, Chris, I asked you the other day, I'm. Where the motion is written up, you want to take it out of prior year cash, but I felt. That it needed to come out of any contingency, did you check that out to see if we're at with this year's? We're fine, so I. I don't think that when we have things like this come up, that we need to. Always keep tapping prior year cash, and if we have a contingency, I think it needs to come out of there. Instead of prior year cash. That's just my opinion.
Do you want to amend this motion?
That it will come out of um. Contingency.
Case request contingency in the budget. Budget limits of that one.
And we have to create, am I correct, according to our auditors. A new line to. Or is this? Or we have to increase our uh.
The extra expenditure, or if you expend, you have to increase it by this amount. To offset. Cause you're before we do the expense and we've done budget for it.
Right. So I'll make a motion. Uh to approve the proposed security software administered by Eclipse Communication and. Annual cost of two thousand three hundred and. Eighty dollars uh. And to take that from contingency. And amend the budget amount to. One oh one, two sixty, zero zero zero, eight oh one, point zero 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 for the annual.
Setting. Yes.
Yes. Agenda item, we have an employee uh to. Uh see uh. That wish to buy some service credits. Uh. And it. If I'm correct, this is on. Each individual basis uh has to come before council if they want to buy service. And we can either approve it or not. Uh but before we can do that, we need to opt in to that program.
And that's what this is doing.
And that is what this is doing. Uh. Uh she came to us uh during our contract. Negotiations and said she would like to buy five years, and then we found out that we had. Previously on though, so. And so she wanted to explore and uh my conversation with the rep from MERS. Uh. Didn't stop her from getting an estimate prior as long, I gave Chris that permission. To sit down with her and see if that's. And so it looks feasible for her that she should, would be able to do that. So that's why this is before us at this time and. And pretty much all of the state over to go all the way back to page seven and that's uh. The only thing that box that we need to check here. That we are permitting. A service credit purchase. Preventing.
So at this time, I'm reading that, but just.
We're permitting her to give her the opportunity to buy five years. Uh we had quite a long discussion and the city is going to be affected. You know. It'll, it may be years down the road that however the market goes. Uh for. The investment for the pools, it may, you know. Increase our contribution. But uh. She does not have that many more years to work with the city in or for the city anyway, so. She's just trying to buy. Five years at this time. Any questions? So I'll make a motion to approve the City of Frankfurt to opt in, allowing employees to purchase service credits. With MERS and allow Mayor Holwerd to sign on behalf of the City of Frankfurt. Yes.
Olsen.
Yes.
Correct, now first.
Yes. And moving forward, now that we've created this. Any employee can now.
They could, but they still have to come to us and we we still have.
Okay, so essentially this is a one.
At this.
At this moment.
At this moment, but we can also in the. Future.
No, Shannon will go, then then it officially we opt in, so then they officially figure out what city, if there's city liability. Her liability to officially give some all part figure, but then it gives her the option to actually get the mini gritty, I don't know what it's gonna be, then it comes back to the city council, you've heard of this.
Was that a stimulus?
It'll take forty.
But even though she. Would be buying five years, she still can't draw on that until she age sixty. That's part of the program. Okay, alright. Any other questions? Okay, waiver. And consent, Josh. For.
By the Frankfurt City County Airport Authority, through RUT. And they are gonna be retaining the attorney firm. Mika Myers PLC, that they have an office out of Grand uh. Man's Steve, they also have an office in Grand Rapids and smaller areas around the states. And really what this is, is a, is kind of a. So when years pass between the the township, the city and the county, Mika Myers has represented this in capacity. They're now perfectly representing the city, the township or the county. But they will be representing the airport authority, so this is basically a. A conflict of interest and consent waiver that was brought forward by Mika Myers. I had a conversation with Ross about it, it was it was kind of one of those things. That attorney firms do to just make sure that neither party has grounds to object later. Uh regarding the representation, so kind of a normal situation with attorney firms. Uh there's, there's no issues uh with our representation whatsoever. Uh questions, the only one-stone issue is on. Whoever is in life. In uh transition sessions. Okay, that's it, other than that, uh I would make a motion. Allowing Mayor Ward's assignment waiver and consent regarding representation by. Again. Like Mika. Myers PLC is legal counsel to Frankfurt City Council.
So which is it for the uh? Sake of the motion, is it Mika or is it?
It's Mika, it's Mika.
Is there a second?
No, please, second.
Seven. Good. Olsen.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm in the charters.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yeah. Metro Act, brand of way. Permit extension.
We started back in two thousand nine, was when we started this project. Uh we get Metro Act money, it varies, we really never know what we're going to get, but last year received eight thousand dollars from us. So it's a source of revenue and basically it said, we allow them to have lines in our rent. So it is a five-year contract, I look back, we've been signing five-year, and on the trusty charts, it's three, we've been signing five-year contracts since the beginning of time.
Why is it that we don't exactly know, like, how much we share?
This depends on. And what, how much they're going to pay us per linear foot. It used to, is it based on subscribers?
Yeah, so like any consulting.
Yeah, and charters definitely according to subscribers. Too. Okay.
But that's a certain revenue we receive, so let's say, yeah, we want that, but do we? Do we have the ability to say how much we want, or is that totally dictated at the state level? Stickered by the amount of customers within the city that are.
Stickered by the amount of customers within the city that are stuck, yes. Yes, I believe it's internet access. Wait, but I don't believe it's phone.
Uh, that I'm not sure about, I didn't think that, dude.
I'll make a motion and to approve Metro Act right of way from an extension agreement between the city of Frankfurt and Michigan Belt Southern Company. See, doing business as AT and T Michigan and authorize Mayor Holwerth to sign on behalf of the city.
Strattens, yes, Chargers.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes, Olsen.
Yep.
Hey, MZOT categories, categories, D grant projects, yes.
Uh, so we submitted, or released a bid, uh, we did get two bids back on that, we got a bid from. Elmers and a bid from Ron Ronson, so. The bid tab addressed paving uh Beach Street between Bell's Avenue and Corning Avenue. James Street between Parkview Lane and Ninth Street. And Parkview Lane between M one fifteen and All Street. So uh, the price breakdown that I did is based on the linear footage of those roads, based on the. Um, so that's how much Beach Street would cost based on unit price. Uh, that's seventy-eight thousand five hundred forty thousand ninety cents. James Street came in at hundred twenty-one thousand five five dollars and seven cents. Or View Lane came in at fifty-seven thousand four hundred six dollars. So the total project cost was two hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-six, Almers was a little bitter. And the category D grant pays for fifty percent of that. So the cost share for us uh in how I broke it down. For Beach Street, cause Beach Street's a local street and these all have to be categorized that way. Uh, that includes twenty-four thousand, twenty-five seven dollars, forty-seven cents out of the casual seats in Box four oh three. And then fifteen thousand of the budget in the mouth within the local street uh underlying at. Two oh three, four, five, one, nine, seven. And then James Street is a major street, so it's a different pot of money within our major street fund, um. The cost share for that is sixty thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars eighty-five cents, that's to come directly out of. Major street cash, and that's why we've been doing these projects through the years, we. We, we go under budget. We save up over several years and then we find ourselves in a position where we can do some bidding, uh, some, some paving projects.
Josh, I looked at local streets and right now we are in a deficit. Cash wise of three thousand six hundred fifty-six thousand fifty-eight cents. It.
So our, our, having a low, low cash flow.
Well, for now though, I, I don't wanna add. To the deficit, I think that maybe. It will be due to major streets to take that fifteen thousand from then and then when the revenue comes back in. Local streets can pay back. I, because we're.
It's fine.
Huh?
That'll, that'll work, as long as we don't exceed the fifty thousand, they need to die.
Right. So I just uh, and even though it's a budget in the mountain, from that, but looking at the cash report. As of the date that these council packets. We had, were in a deficit and that's after adding uh the. The act fifty-one hundred that we just got. So if you did that and it would end up leaving major street. Still in very good shape. So that's my proposal is not to take it from local streets until. They're, they're out.
Yeah, he's always been buying.
I know. But why?
Let's do it.
Keep uh adding the deficit.
All right, what do you think? It's good price.
Yeah.
Got the grant.
So we'll have to amend the motion that. Fifteen thousand will be. Uh, along from. Major streets, I would say so. Oops.
Rather than, I don't know, our budget.
Yeah.
Best you.
It'll, it'll eventually go there. I mean, it'll still come out of there, but the revenue will be in right from major streets. As.
Yes.
It'll be charged to that. Line of nerves. So. So everybody wanna make a motion?
Like, just make a comment, Josh. When we do these, we. Um. Secondes contracts or whatnot, do we? In the past, I've noticed we have not set timelines for when this is going to be done. Uh, this will be done this year, this fall. Okay, can we? Just moving forward, the reason I bring this up is sample the dock park, you know, we proved. Rents excavated for the past and for Caleb. The irrigation back in May. And it's just now happy at the end of summer. I feel like when we create these contracts, there needs to be a clause in there that says. Work needs to be completed by. Such, such a day, the swarm does and it's, and it's like. Skitter, I want those plants gonna be closed by due. So. I, okay, yeah, well, I just wanna bring that to everybody's attention, moving forward that.
That's a good point, yeah.
We don't end up in these situations where we keep approving and then we just sit twiddle our fingers and wonder when the contractors.
This is a relationship work, I agree.
Well. There's probably. Some of what they wanna do. Anyway, okay, I'm good with that. If he wants to spend that long, wow.
I've, I've said enough.
Are, are, I'll make a motion to award the street paving project to owners in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand. Four hundred twenty-six dollars, which hundred twenty-eight thousand seven hundred fifteen will be reimbursed through category D grant. City of Frankfurt costure will come from the bottom, twenty-four thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars forty-seven cents out of cash proceeds. In von four oh three account and fifteen thousand. Of a major street cash, out of major street cash. Uh. As in a local street. As a local street underlying item two oh three dash four five one. Point zero 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 dash nine seven zero point zero 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 for beach, sixty thousand seven hundred fifty-two and eighty-five cents. Out of major street cash for James Street and twenty-eight thousand seven hundred three dollars. Major street cash for Parkview Lane. Yeah, in the bulk of major street expenditures will come out of two oh two four fifty-one nine seventy six thousand.
Right.
But, I'll send you.
Is he second, Chris?
Yeah, Mackenzie's second.
Chargers.
Yes.
Hold on, yes, Olsen.
Yes.
Stratt.
Uh, I have one more comment, um. Streets out there, but the path behind the track on Olive Street. Uh. Is that the final patch? That's kind of a phase patch, that's the. I about chipped my tooth the other day, I bumped over that thing, cause it's. Booged. It's a terrible patch.
Um, it was fine, the only thing I'm gonna, I don't think I'll look at, drive over, um, but I, I'm not the only one who's. Yeah, the plan would be is that be the next street we do in top.
Okay, well, I feel like, I don't know who the contractor was that did that, but. We should put whole paint and it's like pour, or.
I'll, I'll check it out, cause literally it was fine.
It's.
It, it, yeah.
It's a.
I hope that, yeah.
You would go, yeah.
You're going that way off.
So the, the joint. It's just, it dips out, you know, so check it out, yeah. So.
Okay.
Thought I said.
Moving on, Frankfurt Fire Department rate for. Rate of pay for iron. Uh, according to the contract. Twelve dollars. Uh, with the stuff that they can take for our for special events. Uh. But Ironman is an exception because they will reimburse. Uh. So. And I told Mike that he should charge double time for. And this will be a separate pay, cause this is what we need to present to Ironman to get reimbursed for that. So. Uh.
I, I have a couple, couple of questions for this, so these rates are. You know, substantially higher than that, just. You know, if it is, you know, okay, but I guess in the past years, what have we charged, uh? Ironman, are these, you know, can be different than what we've charged the.
Yes, but we looked at what.
I, I.
The county of man is training, and they are getting. Both who doubts.
Yeah, I hear you, and then. Have these revised rates been, been discussed with Ironman at all? No, I just.
Now they just said invoices.
Invoice, they got an email with invoice, whatever, okay. Then a one last question, I see on here. Uh. Uh, we got uh. My good friend Charlie Ops, he's, he's in here for two twelve-hour days, is that correct? He should have been. We've got twelve hours as fire chief, twelve hours as assistant chief.
So.
He should, yeah.
And that should only be one?
Should only be one.
Okay, so take.
Well, yeah, fire chief was it, uh, because seventy-five dollars is actually uh, was the fee that. They charged, I actually just took this right off Benzy last, the director, Benzy and last time got eight seventy-five hours.
Okay, so take that top one off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move that.
Okay.
Yeah, like he said. He's had a look at what. Benzy EMS and all of them.
Well, I guess where it's coming from. You know, I don't know, maybe these guys, maybe they got more money than. Or stuff.
Oh, they did liberals, but I don't think these rates are enough.
I, yeah, I'm not, I, I guess. My point is if they got some crackerjack accountant or somebody like that, all of a sudden. They can go, you know, last year we were paying them the twelve bucks or whatever, now this year we're paying all this, oh. That question might come up.
That's right, I know, inflation.
Well, Ben's cost is charging sixty-five dollars.
Yeah, like, I, I, yeah, I, and I get it, all right.
So I just, you know, if we, we experienced fire, guys.
We followed to. Our. For example, our ordinance for cost recovery. The raise that you got for each piece of equipment, we just did a flat rate, but that's actually an hourly rate.
Right.
If you put twelve hours for that behind it, this thing would substantially jump.
And again, I. I, I'm almost agree, Matt, to me, rates that we're in charge are very, very reasonable. Again, I don't know what we previously communicated.
Not very much.
So, that's all.
And I've calculated for. Aaron Bat was here for overtime for an hour, we had Kevin Joel, and then for the summer kids, Kevin was there time and benefits and. Good taxes, so that's.
And you. You have those numbers, Chris?
Uh, yes, I do, it's in my office, it's about a thousand dollars.
Okay, so that needs to be added to.
That'll be a sub, this, this will all last, one invoice together.
So will you be able to redo this uh? Bill here?
My general.
To take that one off the top.
Sure you can.
Okay. Alrighty. Well, I'll make a motion to approve proposed increased rate of pay. For the twenty twenty-four Ironman event. Who reads like a double rate standard of pay.
Second. Hold on.
Yes.
Olsen.
Yeah.
Stratt, yes, Chargers.
Yeah. I guess the worst thing they can do is still not pay.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they probably won't even tell me that.
And Chris, I haven't even thought of that, that needs to be sent to, so.
Okay.
Um. Well. Remind me, I'm gonna, we need to knock into your parts. Okay. Approval of letter of interest for. The Crankford area land trust. Uh. Jay, I'm gonna have you speak. About this, cause we just got your letter and I've had time to read it.
Sure, this, this obviously come up at uh. It's the Crankford Health official last week and it was discussed and we. We did request to be on agenda or list discussion to take place, it wasn't like, did you answer, well, we. Not sure we can get it on, we'll see what we can do. So. So, you know, so apologies, but. You certainly I think are aware of um, the discussions we've had in the past, both about the housing commission. And the land trust about ownership and need for additional homes. In, not only in Frankfurt, but in Benzy County, so. In addition to the letter that I provided to you on the third sheet, it was really just a summary. Of the housing study that um Housing North commissioned Logan. Uh, two years ago to keep up. And so just to bring to your attention that number, it's pretty staggering, it's twelve hundred and some odd ninety-four, I think is the number. Homes between when that study was done two years ago. In two thousand twenty-seven. So, based on their study of need, that's what they're saying in terms of the total number of homes. That are needed in Benzy County to support housing need. We're certainly falling behind, we generated two homes last year, two homes this year. Really hoping that we can get other um. For-profit companies, other nonprofits to join the mission of building homes. Uh, so we're, we're looking at um. How do we continue to contribute to the need for homes? And if I had a home that is. Um, going to be serving the workforce in perpetuity, which. You know, I think is one of the strongest attributes of uh community land trust is. It can all feel good about building a home at an affordable price in five years or ten years or maybe even sooner. That home is flipped from profit and not bills, it no longer is a forum to our workforce. You know, and, and you can't fault that owner because home ownership is to capitalize on the equity growth, sell property and move out. In our formula, it's a shared equity program, so that that equity is shared between. The homeowner, which would be the seller. And the land trust. That sharing of equity gets rolled back into another new property. So it's that new owner, the, the first owner's opportunity really to pay that. Pay that privilege forward to another family to own a home, our community and have a place to live. That's a forum. And so it's a great model. Um, we'd like to do some more in Frankfurt, uh, as you recall. Our, part of our mission is, is really to uh create attainable housing. Worse housing in our area, in our community. And that extends outside of Frankfurt. Um, so we can look at Alberta, look at the view of Anzonia. Uh, seeing the townships have issues because they don't have utilities. And so because of, of that infrastructure, Frankfurt has been most practical to us. It's also where we were founded, you know, so City Frankfurt was supportive of our land trust, um. We'd like to continue to work together with City Frankfurt to provide more housing. Uh, we're, we're done with our grow place homes, we have closed on our last year homes, but we have buyers. Being vetted for those last two homes. I will count that those sales will close this fall. We have, so that would be moving up, we did look at as an organization. Um, you know, you die in the bargain, just like a city, if we don't have any. Uh, new improvements, something happens new in our community, we die, mayor says, but it's straight, this could be greater if you don't grow. So, with, with our organization, we need to look at, you know, our mission is building housing for our community. And so one of the things that we've been talking about, and this goes back. Probably three or four years ago, uh, the housing commission's initial step was, let's look at. What properties in the city of Frankfurt um could be developed? Use the inventory, where we get, there's into lots that we've identified that could support a duplex here or there, there's some. Talk to the school about, they get two lots and we can actually, based upon the um. Ordinance that we put in place last year, we could build ten weekly units on those two lots, so wouldn't that be cool for the teachers? So there's a lot of things that, that we've been working on as a housing commission and a land trust. You know, as we identified the um Beach Street property as. Pretty underutilized land that the city of Frankfurt has. There's some need for it because it has a wellhouse on it, so there's a utility need for that. That's a very small portion of that property and our question was, could the um, you know, could the uh storage of leaves and dirt and other things up there, could that be? Uh, in another location, is that a second? We'd wanna consider for housing. And, you know, the response that we had back from city officials was, yes, we wanna. And, you know, the response that we had back from city officials was, yes, we want to talk about. That could be a, that could be a site for housing. That goes back to, uh. You know, Katie Cannon, when she was mayor, and we walked the property and said, oh, this is kind of nice. So that's where this thing has come from. Uh, why we asked to put out, um. Currently is that we'd like to write a grant to the rural readiness, um. The rural readiness grant that only provides a fifty thousand dollar grant for planning. And, uh. Our feeling about this project is that we want it to be a showcase property, we don't want to just put a road down middle and houses on each side. We really want to spend time with a good, uh, land planner. To be creative, something that blends. You know, common areas throughout the project, along with some clustering that takes place. To really create a unique neighborhood, not just houses. So. That grant application for readiness grant. Um, that that is due, is a letter of intent that we'll need to file. By, uh, October seventh. So one of the things that's going to be required in that letter of intent is either a. A letter of support from the city. Uh, or a letter of commitment from the city. That at some point in time, given. The housing plan is acceptable to the city. That there would be a conveyance of that property over to the land trust. Land trust would then assume all responsibility for. Uh. The road infrastructure, utilities and and planning, engineering, connecting to city service, services. Uh, we learned in a meeting earlier today. And I don't appear very, but, you know, Brownfield TIPS has been available for wooded properties, for contaminated properties. And over a year ago. State Housing, uh, Commission pushed through. An opportunity for brownfields to be applied to housing, so even though the site is not contaminated. Brownfield tip. And so I am, you know, it's a little bit confusing, um. Uh, to understand what a TIF is, head tax increment financing. So I asked, um. Susan Meslic, who is the Brownfield consultant for Fishback, for Mount Grand Rapids, she lives in Ula. She's actually a member of the Benzie County land bank. So I asked her, I said, well. The dollars, tell me what that means, what is it? And she has a spreadsheet, she didn't send it to me, so I forward that to you now. But a brownfield tip, basically, uh, I said, what if we built ten homes? So we've got two acres, what if you build ten homes? And those homes were valued at about what, what we're selling our homes for now, two hundred thousand is the big numbers now. That created a hundred thousand dollar taxable value number. So plug that into your tip formula, tell me what that. How that comes out. Uh, basically, it would provide revenue back. To us of about thirty five thousand dollars.
To the land trust. Say.
To the land trust, okay, so whoever a land trust. Is, the land trust is. Improving the property, so there's the utility plus the roadways and that type of thing. So you're gonna grab those plus. That tip comes back to. Uh, that ST to improve the land. And the TIF, so it's a, it's a thirty year TIF. But the county, um. Will take the last five years of that thirty years. So if you look at thirty five thousand times. Twenty five years. You know, that's sizable, it's seven hundred and fifty-ish and a thousand dollars, that's probably about. What it's gonna cost to improve that property and data shake and say, yes, because it's. It's very expensive, as Josh will say, to put in roads and utilities. So. You know, our, our, at this point, our plan would be to, A. Right from room, it is, let's get a plan in place that we all feel good about. Uh, we do have a, uh, retired architect that would help us with architectural plans. Uh, did the girl place homes for us, he's on board for this one. Um, so we'll do a lot of research, we'll do a lot of, um. Study in terms of what they should be. Uh, and that's really the. Uh, the proposal we're asking at this point is for the city to support us with a letter of. Um, commitment, uh, you might say, conditional commitment in a lot of ways. Because you'll want to see what we're, what we developed as a plan. Before you John Henry on any other documents. So that's what we're asking for at this point, is we need to get started in our process. Planning is important. Uh, and that's what we're asking. Any other questions I can help you with?
Would you guess, uh, the number of. Humans or houses that go on that?
Yeah, they have a good question, we, uh, we've been looking at other developments, there's one in Grand Rapids called Welling Place. So you can go on wellingplace.com and look at their project. And we looked at the, uh, sprint foot, um. Uh, sprint utilization for homes. And so we kind of plugged that into, um, there's a much larger project, they're forty acres. Or forty units, so we just plugged in their, their lot. Uh, spread for it into this, and that's where we came up with our ten to twelve. And, uh.
Which is like two phases of said.
We've been direct phases, which I think is better, it's nothing, see, right now, we did two homes, first year, second, we did two. So we're gaining some momentum, we're gaining some how to do. Uh, the job. And we feel pretty comfortable about ramping before. And so this would be a. Three to four year project, obviously, the first year you're gonna spend most of the next year. With the infrastructure and roads. And hopefully get some homes under construction in the fall of twenty five. For delivery in the spring of twenty six. Uh, for our first families.
So. Even this letter of intent, the purpose of that is so that you can. Present to that letter to, for this fifty thousand. Grant, correct?
Yes.
And they could say yes or no, right?
It's a letter of intent, um, that we would file with them. And they have actual applications, so once they. Understand your intents and what you're wanting to do, they can move to the next level, let me ask for a full. Application, I believe that's in December, Josh, so. That's in December, we would be done. Completing a full application at that point, and there might be other requirements, so. We need something purely purely from the city that's gonna confirm that.
That's pretty much like the home stretch. Letter of intent. That we had to do for him to be able to move forward.
Right, yeah. Yeah, very similar, uh, because it's city land to nonprofit, this is city land to nonprofit. Uh, there are a couple of other things I would say, uh, just in terms of. This project is favors the need, uh, I think every employer can see. Uh, but certainly that there's a need for housing in our, in our community, any employer's gonna say. You can't hire this person because they can't find a place to live. Uh, they have to drive too far to get here. So the cost of housing. And this would be a project that's not, um. Uh, it's being taxed at the at lower tax rate, so it's not a freebie. Uh, you you're looking right now at, uh, city owned properties generating zero. And this would be generating, uh. There's a million dollars in taxable value if you build ten homes. So do the math, that's about thirteen fifteen thousand dollars a year. To the city, just the city's portion of of your property taxes.
From the.
From the homes.
Home.
Yes. And probably a little bit more than that, because our model calls for. The land to be continued to be owned by the land trust. And the homes are seen as.
The homes be taxed.
The the land is still taxed, so. The land, interestingly enough, on the four grow place homes right now. That land is being taxed at the not homestead rate. Because if the way the state looks at it is, it's a commercial property that's being rented to someone. Because we have an eighty nine year lease with that homeowner. So we are working collectively as a CLT group, um, we meet every month. So we're actually, uh, working on legislators to to see if we can get. The home set expert, uh, the ground. That we have home placed there. So, and right now we are paying the, uh, kind of house to rate. For, um, for those.
And lots for.
Yeah, as we went over here, so, you know, my thirteen to fifteen numbers probably low. Cause that tax shouldn't be there in addition, so.
But again, it's necessarily one hundred percent, but it's in two.
You, there's, there's, what we're looking for is a lot of addition upon your approval at a later time. You know, so. Uh, because the. Running escape, they're gonna wanna know that we have land, you know, that we have. If we, if we do, if we create everything that we set according to, and we come up with a great plan. We have land to move forward on this project. And so. We were looking at a couple of other grants through Michigan to actually fund. Uh, home construction, we decided to delay that until we get our planning done first. Make sure that we're moving forward, and then we can apply for. Some Michigan housing grants, and just so you know. The missing middle grant for our four homes on grow place was sixty thousand dollars per home. It's a lot of money, doesn't come close covering the cost that we have each of those homes to build and sell it, what we sell it for. It's closer to eighty. And number that most nonprofit developers will use per home is a hundred thousand dollars. So the currently Michigan has program. It's called My Neighborhood. And they will grant up to four hundred thousand dollars for four homes. Uh, to build, obviously, if they're sold within. The income criteria that that we do. Um, so it's, um. Again, our steps on this deal are going to be, we want to do a plan, we want to make sure it's something that everybody. Likes, including the community, so it's not just. Us, it's not city council or housing commission. We want to sit down with neighbors or nearby and say, here's conceptually the plan, and what do you think? Uh, we don't ever want to move into a community assuming that everybody's gonna be. High learned, supportive, need to talk. And so that's our commitment, uh, of communication. To that, to that particular neighborhood, but there would be single family, uh, homes. Uh, two and three bedrooms is is basically what we're, can we're looking at. Some of the, you know, range style homes, single level. We are concerned to consider two level homes just to mix it up. You definitely will have something smaller, you know, two bedroom, one bath. Uh, because we do see a need for single labs and. Uh, staring at teachers and others that don't need three bedrooms, and they still live in the house, so.
Any questions from council?
Questions, uh, comments.
Comments, yeah.
Um, I do applaud what. The land trust has done so far. With the four houses up on Road Place. However, uh. Do you want to agree with Mrs. Burks a little bit that? That is city owned property, and it's that it is an asset. Uh, to everybody that pays taxes in the community. And I wonder. Also, I'm gonna read this out of the, uh, charter real quick, it's, um, under powers of council. Section four dash ten, under J. And that sale of property, the first sentence doesn't really apply here, but I'll read it in full. The council shall not have power unless approved by majority of the electors voting there. Sell any part of cemetery or any part thereof. Or any property bordering on a lot, okay? That doesn't really mean a whole lot, this current situation. Other city property may be sold by the affirmative vote of two thirds of the members of council after. Public hearings are held in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
Which I think is the process did did take place with lately made, so there were, you know. That procedure was followed, you know, in terms of, this isn't, this isn't transfer, this isn't. You're not beating the property at this point, you're simply saying that, yes, we support.
I just wanted to communicate this, so that we're on the same page, you know?
Well, I think, um, to your point, really. I think the community needs to see the plan, uh, they need to understand what we're doing. Cause even by any what we're doing. You know, we're not asking. Just for the land, the city to give up their land today. We really need to prove to ourselves and to the city and to the neighborhood. That it's a good plan. So. The first step for us is a spread, we want to get our plan in place, we want to know that it's a good plan. And and listen to feedback from our community, and. There's a lot of different input that needs to happen. It's, you know, what our neighbors want, what the community want, city. Um, what do our homeowners need? So what are their needs, and and we're getting some great input on that. Through our partner at Northwestern Michigan Community Action Agency. Cause they're the ones that are. They're really landing all of our leads for homes. So they understand what those folks need from a home size standpoint. But also a budget. So we're bringing them into the. The planning process as well, in terms of understanding for sure what they need. Uh. So those are all the components that we'll go into this next step of planning.
I mean, as long, as long as this is. Uh, we're not committing to anything without a land. You know, I mean, two point six five acres, that's a fair amount of land, I mean. They're not making any more land anymore, you say.
Well, you know, you know, we, again, we're looking at bestment of our time. And we do have other options, so if the city is real hesitant on this, you can certainly move out. Yeah, because there are other options for us, either near Frankfurt. Or some commercials in Frankfurt. Uh, there are gifts of land. Cause people understand what kind to do. So, yes, we bought a lot of them, I actually often personally transferred them back over to land trust. Because if I hadn't, we would have missed. There'd be four in that market home town, those four lots today. So, you know, we're doing what we can. Uh, we do want to work over on another project. Um, and it has to be, you know, we need to get going on this soon. Because otherwise, as again, as a, as an entity, if we don't have a task ahead of us, we soon lose our. Our volunteerism, we lose our energy, uh, we lose our mission, so. We will be moving forward on something. If you.
So, council, what do we want to do? Parents?
We even want, I guess, she said, she said that she had questions, she was reading right.
Uh.
Public's not working, she, you do.
So probably, well, public input is next, as she wanted to speak before we made any kind of a motion, so.
In case the, in case anyone had questions following. Jay, I have a question, is it okay?
Go ahead.
Yeah, you had mentioned the TIF, I. I don't know what a TIF is, I don't understand really how it works, I know we've got a TIF for the downtown Main Street. And my understanding was. These properties are taxed, those tax revenues go into a separate fund. That funds the DVA. So what you're saying in this brown, whether it's.
Different.
Brownfield tip, so properties would be taxed.
Yes.
Those funds wouldn't come to the city, but they'll go back to you.
That generates tax revenue.
But where does the thirty five thousand come from?
So it's, it doesn't take that away, it's the difference of new tax deduction. Against capturing, see, Josh, I understand the point of that, you.
Yeah, so I don't.
All, all I know is I asked, this is the plug in those numbers.
Yeah.
And I can send you the spreadsheet, it shows the revenue stream with her with point five year period.
Cause. I know for the downtown, they can only use those tax, red tax revenues for projects on downtown. Not for the general benefit of the community overall.
The problem with it is designed to. Uh, reimburse the developer for the upfront possible value, that's really what it's there for.
So the source of those funds are.
The tax revenue.
The tax revenue, so it does come from the tax.
This space tax, I don't know.
So, so like, like right now, it's a big piece of land. Right now, that's, these properties are zero.
But it could, I mean, it could be sold.
But, yeah, so, sorry. In a normal situation, you you would take taxable value and freeze it. And then that value's gonna grow because it's gonna get developed, so that difference is gonna be captured. And that's what gets reimbursed back into the developer, the purpose of development.
So.
The benefit to the community is, is the long term tax revenue that it's. Plus, you still get what you get.
Five for the six.
Yeah. And then goes on a grid inflation, I'm sorry.
Does, does the tax, meaning, you know, we all have our assessed values go up every year, and that increases the revenue for the community.
Yes.
Benefit overall.
Yes.
So in this situation, as it goes up. It wouldn't go to the community overall, goes to the tip.
It'll be an inflationary component, that'll be increased on the property as a whole, so it'll, it'll slide up.
Okay.
Then once the obligation for the development is is exhausted, then the community gets all of it. So there's a period of time.
Five years or something?
Um, well, you can negotiate that. They they could be ten years, fifteen years, thirty years.
I promised you'd explain the tip for me, I didn't mean for it to be in a public meeting, I'll hold you to that.
Okay, sure.
You know, and, uh, Susan, uh, she's always very helpful, she would be happy to provide. You know, a quick, uh. Probably set our, at least, top, period of time presentation on what a tip is. And how it impacts, uh, for example, tax revenue. Um, and and how how it works. But it is a tool that's being used by our state. To occur in housing, you know, six places.
And historically, it's been a, like, tool.
Yeah, well, and I know in Dallas we had tips, but they would, Dallas is a huge community. Well, and I know in Dallas we had tips, but they were, Dallas is a huge community, so it usually wasn't a significant. Asset, maybe so that was in most.
So the bottom line, basically. This request is more for the development of it. Uh the tip would pay back. The land trust for the development of it. However, the city will benefit by. Getting revenues from the homes when they're sold. Am I correct?
In-house.
It's black.
Now, this could set us up too for a different grant, you know, so let's say we're successful this grant. And we develop a site plan and everybody. You know, likes it, we move forward. We will submit another grant to Misha, the whole covers the costs where that that tip component could actually reduce. If, you know, the more grant funding you get.
Yeah. So I guess. We're to the point is, do we have a motion out there to? Send a letter of intent? For the land trust? Or the beach property? That's pretty much. Thanks, anybody willing to make that law? Okay. A second. I'll say that, okay, just for. Okay, any other discussion or comments?
I mean, I think I'm clarifying that this is just a point that they need. To move forward in planning stages, correct Jay?
Right.
So.
And Josh, will you? Work with Jay to form that letter of intent? For us? That should be pretty much like the home stretch one, correct? Okay. Roll call.
Wilson.
Yeah.
Stratton. Yeah. Travers.
Yes.
Florida.
Yes. Okay, and with second round.
So. I uh. Jayway forty eight Bridge Street, does not speaking as a public. Person. Um so I. Did, as many of you know, did resign my position on the planning commission this past month. And part of that was wanting to really commit more time to housing, it's difficult when you've got four large notebooks and you carry them around. There's just a lot more and you get confused on which meeting you're in. Think the last six years I was in planning commission, unfortunately. Need some good progress on zoning. Uh ordinances that will really attract housing and work well for us. Um I think as a closing, close out um comment I would make on planning commission time. Is that if it feels we get a lot of criticism from the public. Really what we're trying to do is look at, how does this town grow, and when it does grow. What are the ordinances that need to be in place so that it's properly zoned? You know, and it's it's difficult because there there are areas of things that you need to explore. Because of, you know, because of the way the business is growing and. Where our community needs to grow. Um because I can all agree, if we stay the same, we die. And unfortunately, that's just reality, so if we never build anything. New, uh we die. And so. In that vein, and and really, my my, I guess my last comment is very personal. Is that um I was supportive individually. Of what was to take place or at least proposed on the lucky property. Uh because I thought about lodging, which we need, demonstrated huge. As the zoning ordinance, as a zoning, uh planning, planning commission member. I think it's our obligation to look at where does commercial activity. Lives, where should it be? It should not be in our residential community, which was where a lot of short term rentals are. It should be in a commercial district, so I was very supportive of that project. From a hospitality standpoint. I was disappointed that the city didn't reach out to that developer and say, hey. The rooftop ordinance, the rooftop deck, it's not gonna happen, you know, we we feel, we're feeling that from our community. It's not gonna happen, is there a way we can reconfigure, is there a way we can live within the current zoning ordinance to make it happen? And indeed, there is a way to me. I was in Charlotte way last week and we went over to. Hotel football, Golden, the next lane, it's on the worst side of the bridge, on the right side. Just go up there, they built within their building height, it's a rooftop deck, it's delightful. You see the view of the bay, view of the lake, and I would challenge anyone to say it would not be enjoyable to go up there and have dinner. In that community. So I think. My party in common is now disappointed, the reaction from this community, they want me to shut that down. Rather than this. That this city should have sat down with that belt and said, hey, we like the council, we don't like the plan. Is there, is there something we can do to move to make that change? My understanding is that they've walked away now, so we've lost that opportunity. The property will sell. And I was aware of a couple other developers that looked at it. Their projects were not nearly as attractive as that, or would not have done. That much for our community, thank you.
David Klitschko and I know, you know. Thank you, Jake, um. Yes, my question to the council is. Where does the city? Get its, we're we're, when do we get into the building? Houses, the 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 business of building houses. For for our residents. The way I'm looking at. I'm fairly new here, but I'm also, I have a history of the twenty more history. Of of being here. And. We have. The subsidized housing on the beachfront, we have the tiny A and W, now we have the new one going up here. We have a lot of. Subsidized housing. And. To give. What happened to? You know, builders, if if that land is actually valuable, can we get more money from? Selling it to somebody who wants to. Build condos or build. Houses or. One house on a two and a half acre lot. Where did we get? Where did we get in the business, building houses?
Middle class is gone. You gotta provide houses, but middle class is gone, the cost of living on base language. You can see it in every business in this community, it's greater than this community, it's all the.
It's the population's going down.
Hardly, you're not having housing for the workforce, so they don't exist. So where where where's our workforce to live?
I tried to rent and I got. Um some negative feedback from. People up here.
Uh being a landlord, some crazy people, either right or wrong, I was like, experience with that, but. Yeah, it's it's a tough world we're in right now. And the cost, for short put, it just, building, you know, it supersedes what any, any family can afford. We've become the has and has nots. That's that's like. What has happened, as everywhere.
Fairly, we saw my community, it's like, awesome.
And my question, here's another question. We have, if we have built all these these uh subsidized housing. Who decides? Who lives there?
He goes, goes through a vetting. Well. I don't consider land trust as subsidized, uh. Because they can purchase that, but. The applicants, as well as our linked in name, go through a vetting process outside of the city.
Who's that, so, yeah, who's that some?
It's an organization out of Cracker City. That they look at their income, uh. Their probability of gaining from the faith. Rent or buy that home. So on and so forth, so all of the applicants. For the rental and for the land trust. If um they don't meet the criteria. They don't get us, so. Yeah. We we don't wanna be in that, this is that's why they're vetted out through a separate organism. It's separate from the land trust and it's separate from the home stretch.
So we're giving the vetting process to someone else, so.
Oh, it's a, it's a regional, not by.
Yeah.
Based on the diversity, they they provide this service to. Here, here, you know, we see in the region.
Right.
And they're, they do the vetting and they do the income verification, so these these folks have got jobs. They have to make twenty five thousand dollars a year, seventy five thousand dollars a year to dwell on.
Hi there, um, please, one by Michigan Avenue, um. I have just a couple questions in relation to. Um where a few things stand that I am having really difficult time finding on the website. One is, I really greatly appreciated. The effort put into putting the packet. On the website prior to the meetings, and I'm wondering why that is happening. Like now. And will it, is it just, was it a matter of timing? Or was it a matter, is it something that you decided not to do?
What do you mean by your packet?
Okay, it's shared in front. The board, not the agenda, the board packet. The board packet, you were posting the packet of the, like, all the reports, superintendent report. Fire chief report, that can, it's just the reports. Okay, so I would just say that's really helpful, totally appreciate you doing that, if we can make sure that that gets done ahead of time, that would be great. Um, wanted to understand. The beach bathroom and where that stands. Um I, I'm just saying, where is it that I can find the information in minutes? Because now I'm understanding potentially that it's gone back to the rec department. Is that right or is that not right? I'm just trying to clarify. And know where I can get the information.
It has been kicked back to the record, we thus far, not a lot. Has moved.
Yeah, we're.
Currently, we are exploring a lot of options, I'm telling you. Not a lot going on, but.
Do we still have a grant for it?
Yep.
Isn't that still within the timeframe of the grant? Extension, extension, okay.
Deal for us.
And so we have to do is, once we get the plan, that has to be presented. Back for. The grant people. To approve and then go forward.
So, so right now it's been deemed to go into. Fine.
Okay.
Uh it's not, uh, I've been the, I'm an area, I mean. To each end of life. And uh we are. Waiting through to determine do we want to proceed with a prefab structure? Or do we want to do a a design bid, build a structure? And that's where we're at right now, trying to figure out the cost factor, staying clean.
So, and it says the record, so I should be watching record stuff in relation, that's all I'm really asking, where should I be finding the information?
Forthcoming B of L's, rec site plan that will show. You know, this type of structure, we're located in our active utilities. Um because it's a flip from Sac Street to Miami Street now, as far as. Utilities, so. You know, our house got shifted to a different street. And we're working on all of that work as well.
See that last part again, I didn't get that, a flip from Sac Street to Miami Street?
The prior structure, and it's coming down Sac. This is gonna down Miami.
I see.
So. There's just a little bit of engineering work that's stolen into that.
Yeah. Okay. And the last thing, I know that this went off, so I apologize, um, is. I'm. Where's the short term rental? Situation, where should I be watching that information to, because I'm confused, because I've seen some comments in minutes, I try to be. Try to read the minutes once they're.
What respect?
And re- respect that, um, there is issues related to, um. Uh, public. Problems with short term rentals. And that they're putting a governance to hire somebody to be the enforcement piece. I'm trying to find out where that sits. In what committee?
Yeah, and Josh is trying to give me information that's needed. Mike is still working on. Instructions and repeat. It's uh things that are applied with, uh. But. Once we get somebody in place. That can do enforcement. Of that and we get this company that. Shows us who's flying under the radar, so on and so forth, then we'll work with that.
Okay, so, I just, again, to clarify. Currently, short term rentals, you had a process that you went through, you had a licensing, you your permit, et cetera. Your ordinance, all of that's, nothing has changed out. That hasn't gone to a committee to have changes.
So originally understood that. You know, that was the uh. Although that was, you know, uh. Vetted out quite a bit, it was always the intent after a few years. To relook at it, to see how it was, it was working well, well, it wasn't working well, what. Tweaks might have to be put in. And that's kind of, that's kind of where we're sitting right now.
I appreciate that, where, I'm, I guess, my assistant, the planning commission, that's what I'm wanting to know is where that is, that's in the planning. Commission, okay, sorry, I'm just trying to clarify where stuff is. I was not aware that the beach bathroom went back to the rec committee until I caught that somewhere, and I'm like. So that's what I'm trying um to figure out. Um, and I would just say from a public, it really is disappointing that our police chief. Isn't showing up for things, and I hope. That you all do something about that, I don't know what you can do, I know he's retiring. Um but it's. Unfortunate. And um I appreciate everything that you do, I appreciate everything that the council does. Appreciate what the police do. Police chief needs to be engaged, and that's just really unfortunate that he's not, so. Okay, anyway.
That's it, thank you.
Yes. What works in Michigan? I I'm gonna talk to you guys, but I'll still kind of talk to Jay here. Jay, if I understand how your process works. Once you have a property. It never really leaves the program. You can, they can sell it, but they gotta sell it to somebody else to qualify. So I understand you're also looking around town at other places. And I kind of. Take a run out to the future there. I think if you continue to do what you want to do pretty soon. Well, not pretty soon, thirty, forty years, you're gonna own the whole town. And it's all gonna be. Subsidized housing. If I, if I get to buy something below market value, it's subsidized. And if we have tips and other processes by which. We take property that is taxable now, out of the tax pool. I don't see how the city can survive doing that long term. And if it's only, you get a reduced level of taxes. Reduced. Only goes. One way. And ultimately, the city can survive if they don't have a tax base.
I'm gonna explain, I don't have a tip for us, so we are not.
We got a tip here.
Yes, you have a conversation, but you should really be addressing the board, but.
I think it's a mistake for the city. To take property that could be put to more productive. Taxable use. And give it. To some form of subsidized housing, I don't care whether. Jay and Matt like subsidizing, if I'm slipping on his toe there, I'm sorry. But it's reduced cost housing. And it's going to some of it. I understand the need across the United States for additional housing units, but I don't know that Frankfurt. Needs to be worried about, and obviously not the whole US, but at least the county that ran it. It would appear. We're, we've got some kind of motion underway here to provide housing for the county. I don't think that breeds long term success for the city of Frankfurt. That's false. Jake, because I picked you up, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I've got something else sent you, but so thank you. Like I can go. For. Uh restaurant, we're supposed to be at three, she's.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need. Any other public input from anybody that has already spoken? Okay.
I'll make a motion to a chair.
I'll second. Travers. Florida, yes. While it's a trade. I don't even. Where's your. They're gonna say that you need to do my applications. You know, we're out of cost.